Good evening. The public hearing. The first item in business is this lady's business, which includes approval of the minutes of July 17, 2014, and ZBA financial review. At 7:10, we have a case assigned. And at 7:20, during case on Pool Installation, at 3:30 for Central Street. And at 7:45, decision on case number 9106, sale of water truck. And the continuation of the area of play will be updated. I'll ask the board to all very well. July 17.
Aye.
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 Agreement?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, I'll ask both of you to accept.
So move.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Executive. For all's favor.
Aye.
Aye.
We have financials. Solving account of $8,700. Solving account of $5,000. Expense account of $1,600. Payroll account. Yeah. Any questions with that? Please put together the decision for, last decision for this. $7,000. On 12 Central Street. Approved conditions. And all of the changes.
No.
You're back.
How come I don't? Did you send it out?
Yes, you did.
I read it, but I don't remember.
Okay, do you copy?
You'll be hydrated. I'm not going to. Yes. Yes, I read. My memory is like a sieve. A sieve.
Sieve, I should know it. Comment? Those are here. But just go ahead. All those favors of approving case number 14.05, signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Chairman.
What is it?
Yes.
One second. Now, voting the public hearing for case number 15.02 from Gibraltar Pools Corporation. We have Michelle and Nicole Michael and Michelle Riley. A special permit at 3:30 for Central Street. It's now open. Public hearing will proceed in normal fashion. And I ask for cooperation in the following procedure. Everyone present will be given the opportunity to rehearse after the application is presented and the board members ask questions. The secretary will be reporting what is said. Therefore, when you address the board, begin by stating your name and address. Speak slowly and clearly. Only one person will be allowed to speak at a time. At this time, if any board members can hear this in this property, listening to the people, can you tell me too?
No.
No?
No.
Public hearing for this application was posted in Town Hall, certified as a body of interest, and was published in Town Hall on August 6th and August 13, 2014. And read as follows. Case number 15.02. A public hearing will be held at Town Hall Annex 39 Central Street on Thursday, August 21st at 7:20 p.m. To act on the application received 7/23/14 from Gibraltar Pools Corporation on the April 14th and Nicole Riley of 34 Central Street in Lowry House. Applicant is requesting a special permit from the board of appealers on above ground pool under requirements of section 6.1 and 3.1 of the law determined by law. Property is located 334 Central Street, Lowry House. Property is outlined in District of the show and assessment plan for year two, block 19, block one. At the public hearing, members of the public may ask questions and present evidence that supports either the ruling or petition. Purpose of this hearing is for the board to hear and consider pertinent facts relating to the application and to approve the conditions within eye. For hearing in the public, the applicant will be allowed to present their case and board members allowed to ask questions upon it. The applicant is present.
Yes, sir.
The unit is Riley.
I am Peter D. Bernardo from Gibraltar Pools Town Sale.
Welcome forward. Tell us what you want, what you propose to do.
Well, we'd like to put an above ground pool partially in the backyard and partially in the side yard. The house has wetlands directly behind the house and driveway to the left-hand side of the house. So we need to do only one place on the property that isn't in the front yard. Is an area where a portion of the above ground pool is sticking up to the side yard. But we need variants from the setback. So that the edge of water is seven feet off the property line.
Are you the one that presented this plan?
Yes. So there's another map that I think that's part of the package that's in here. Another perfect fact is a more, looks to be a more elaborate set of plans.
That's the one that Brent put out.
Brent basically drew from a, from the, yeah, exactly. So the next one, I think, would be where the rectangular above ground pool.
See something else on?
I will try to get my app.
Well, that's like a good plan. So we'll see what we can. I have a letter here from. I have three letters here that I have received. One from Conservation Commission, one from the Board of Selection, and one from, plan I wrote. Actually from, all these sets. Sorry. Let me just read these letters and understand what's going on. The property is all in the outline district consists of simple family residential drawing where the septic system is located in front porch of the property and Central Street. And where the back half of the property is covered by wetlands. The existing house is located approximately 121 feet on the edge of the wetlands. The owners request a permission to install a 12 by 24 tank for above ground swimming pool to be located seven feet from the east of the property line. There is another residential property located in this one. Section 60.1 or 3.1 of the law is on board of the Rowley, it's on the back of the drive line. Zone drive line prohibits swimming pools within 15 feet beside property property except with permission from the zone board of appeals. In that regard, the applicant has submitted a special permit request to the ZBA. According to the drawings submitted by the applicant, the pool will be located 215 feet from the wetlands. Following includes some commentary from presentation and recommendations from the zone board based on that review. The proposed pool will be most visible to the neighborhood to leave each one. The pool, according to the application is favorable this year. The ZBA should confirm this support for possible temporary public hearing and should be sensitive to any requests from the part of that neighbor of the installation of drive line screen. The ZBA should also confirm that this location is a more possible location as opposed to potential locations behind the house where the application states there are wetlands that could seep and seep through. It is not clear from the drawing if this is the case since there is no topographical information in the drawing known as the 100-foot wetlands cover. The ZBA should affirm in anticipation that there is no room for the pool behind the house but upland of the 100-foot drainage source protection line. Additionally, this would introduce reasons for the request. Action of the ZBA application for a pool contractor states that a little enforcement provision would deny the homeowners the reasonable enjoyment of their land. I would point out that in consideration of the criteria to be used by the ZBA in proving the application, ZBA members should take note that because this is a special permit to do, proper criteria for approval would be those cited in section 7.8 or 2.1, a and i, rather than the righteous criteria stated in topographical condition as a complete appearance request. And that's what I'm saying. We have a letter here from the Board of Selection that states the Board of Selection who do the application at 334 Central Street, according to August 11, 2014. The Board of Selection does not have any objections or questions or comments on this application. The Board of Selection. And from the Conservation Commission by David. Chairman, first, members of the Zone Board of Appeals. Conservation Department has reviewed the application's proposals and harvest the following comments. Conservation Department has no objections to the proposed location construction of an above ground pool depicted on the submitted sketch by the Conservation Department, which is to point out that the sketch plan doesn't depict an approximately 44-foot wide infectively restricted no cut from the strokes measured off the edge of the board of vegetation and wetlands lying in tart flyes in the area to be viewed. There's a mech looking narrow into the useful backyard that appears to have compacted position closed pool. Two, the applicant should be advised in stormwater management proposed control by law, which requires the use of appropriate control measures for the closing and sanitation on to or by the property of upper driveway, the wetlands and water courses and the case waters. Any that really related to installation of the whole pool. Three, the Conservation Department suggested the property owner be permitted to drain or discharge of pool water directly into the no-cut from the wetlands. Instead, pool water can drain should be allowed to flow over the surface above 13 feet on the private floor and no path or any associated buildings. This would allow for block gas and certain filtration and reduction of velocity with the wrap distance from the outlet and from the Conservation Commission. Get about, try to get to. Boy, you don't know. Which may part of the.
He hasn't drawn. They only draw the, uh, pool with this one. It shows the property. Here's the property. Here's the existing dwelling. This is where he wants to put the pool. There's the septic. So it's really along some of the, this is the back of the property.
What?
Yes.
What's the dimension from the pool to the house? No, there's no dimension here, correct? How come they can't come closer to the house, the house?
101. It looks like, well, you can figure it out. It's 101, 113, 120.
Well, you got the air conditioning, right? I know, I see them. You could so come closer to that. Is that, is that, it looks like, is that any air conditioning?
There's two air conditioning units. They're very large. You don't want to be outside. They're outside next to the house.
Is the letter?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Got comments?
Do you have a opinion?
I would like to see a plan of the pool. We haven't seen one at all.
It'll come up. We need to show you.
And another question is, what about the drainage? If I got that pool to burst somewhere, where would all that water go to? Would it come over to our property?
There ain't.
Let it depend on what side of the pool bursts.
So we don't know.
This new, she ain't trying to. Mike told us though that would be in the corner, but.
See, this is, this is our property over here. You will be, but you're over here.
But then our property goes.
What?
Our house is up there.
This is, this is the street. That's this property. This is you guys over here?
Yes.
And your property comes adjacent all the way to the perimeter, but not behind this property. It's back here. It comes back here.
Yes.
Okay.
So how many feet per hour property line of this green?
Yeah, that's 47.
Seven feet.
Keep it, keep in mind, if, if he had located it for other reasons, just eight feet over, he wouldn't need to be here. So that, so that, so whether, if your thoughts are, oh my goodness, what would happen if it happened? If he were only eight feet away, he would be full well within law not to even talk about it.
This would just, I didn't see the plan.
That's right.
I mean, we have, we'd just like to know where.
Well, I've got, the building is right here. You can, you know, I'm sure he could provide you with a more, more, my could, with an elaborate, you know, plan.
And the seven feet is already the.
Well, that's what we're reviewing.
Yeah.
That's, that's what.
That's what we're trying to consider. But your opinion? That's why we want to know what your feelings are.
Wouldn't deny it.
It's just that. Is the land, is, what's the topography here? Is it flat?
No, it all goes down into the water.
Does it go down the back? All goes down the back? Doesn't slope necessarily into yours?
Yeah, it will, yes. A little bit, but the, you know.
The whole thing just slopes.
All run down.
Yeah.
This, I know that the nature of this type of pool is unlike, and perhaps our builder could talk about it, is unlike what you and I frequently see as an above ground pool, which is round or rectangular. When I had one, when those collapse, it's, as the chairman said, it could depend, water could go anywhere. But that's because there's not really much of a superstructure to it. And when liners go in those kinds of pools, typically it washes out below the pool and it's just a question of where it runs off. This pool, though, an above ground pool, has much more structure to it. It's much less likely to be subjected to the kind of damage that a typical above ground pool that you may see driving down the road, which is around a ladder or something.
This is correct.
Well, this is, not only is it rectangular, but it's a different kind of build structure. It's a much more substantial pool, though it's above ground, as opposed to.
Well built.
I mean, I, you know, for your own edification, I would still certainly get a copy of what they're gonna do because you're entitled to it if you, if you would, would like to have it. I'm sure they'll get one for you. I'm sure you have it.
This stuff is true. This doesn't say where it's gonna be.
We'll make it a big mistake.
It doesn't say where it is on the street. It just shows a picture. It's a handstand. It doesn't say where it is on the location. Doesn't show. It's no dimension. Yes, there is 119. My mistake, there is. 119 on the front. Two here. Yeah. And some. It's hard, you had to see it.
Anybody else have any questions?
Can I just ask the butter who was just up here? How far is your dwelling from this sideline? I don't know.
Very close.
Yeah, what about? Very close?
Yeah.
I would say about 200 feet, I would say. No, not that far. The house itself?
The house itself.
Well. You mean from the, from the sideline?
From the sideline of that, their property.
The line between your property and their property. I would say about this line here.
20 feet?
I'm sorry, from the pool location.
It's 200.
Is there?
Well, it's almost on the sideline. So it can't, there's gotta be.
Can't be 200. What's the width of that property? We were with them there? On the property?
Yeah, this is about 110, 128.
So it would have.
That's 101. And that's seven. It's probably 120.
We are right up here. So he can't, this can't be 200 feet.
No, because the whole property's width is 100. You'd have to be a double width property away.
Well, you're concerned about a potential structural failure. And what I was curious about is, I mean, it's one thing to have this fail and some water go on your land. It's another thing to have it fail and water go into your basement or something like that.
I don't think so. I don't think it would.
Okay. All right. Because you're upward, right? If it slopes back, then.
It's just, you know, whatever we have over here. We have, we have.
Shed up here. It all goes downhill from ours. It's all going away.
It wouldn't run to our house, I don't think. I mean, if it were, if it were forced uphill in some way, that's unlikely.
You know, water. Goes down those points.
But you don't know what is, is wholly not that modern.
Well, that's what we, that's why we're trying to consider the probabilities. So they want to come with 70.
Is there a pitch?
Sketch here. You strict, you no cut.
Conservation officer did walk the side with me and he submitted the letter. He viewed exactly where it's going, made the measurements himself and said we're, we're out of their area of concern. He also agreed it was the only spot.
Yeah, I'll loan it up right here. Want to see your property?
Does the, does the filter discharge to the rear? I know you can.
Yeah, the filter won't discharge. The filter has a self-contained cartridge system. So there's no bad washing treating pool water into the environment. Everything is the same water that gets filtered within the pool. So there's no bad washing anymore, like a sand filter you would have to do. So there's a self-contained pool that clean all your water. So there won't be anything coming out. We've never had a pool collapse in 30 years. Built 10,000 pools correctly. We're familiar with them. Instead of the one piece of rolled wall, there's a round pool directly across the street from these folks' house. That could collapse if one part of the pool is compromised. The water comes out. It's much more likely that that water would come down to their house than this one. Our pool is probably 10 feet below grade from the neighboring house. So they would never be able to make it. And it's over 100 feet away. So the thing with this is that we've never had a collapse, because it's sort of a one-piece wall, we've got four-inch-wide tundin roof, interlocking steel panels, it's basically a steel box, it doesn't lend its, lend itself to collapsing.
Yep. How much of it, what's the depth of the pool?
It's a four-foot wall.
Okay, so it's an even, if the, there's no, there's no deep end?
It's, no, there's no deep end, we're not doing major excavation, except that where the pool's going, it is kind of sloopy, there is some sort of a gentile end there.
Right, right. Right, okay. So you're gonna, you're gonna agree there?
One end of it, yeah.
It's all the vegetation behind it.
It's, uh, you know, uh, what is it, fragmites? It's all of the, you know, reeds and things like that.
Okay.
Tell me where the pool's going.
I just Googled it. Right here. Yeah, the pool is going, if this is the back right, the pool is going like right here. You see, this is a long distance, a long distance, and this all slopes downward. So it would, the water could not possibly make it over there. But there's also a lot of trees here, which kind of forms.
It's like this vegetation, right up next to their house.
Yeah, I think they're treetops probably coming over, but they're not actual tree trunks at this point, this is pretty much clear. Except for the air conditioning units, which appear in there.
Do I see them here? You like that?
Yes.
I'm sorry for making the, the, the neighbors weren't favor the project, I got that from the homeowners, but it's both.
Well, they said they're.
Like to do a good language.
They're not opposed to it.
Oh, okay, it makes sense.
I just hope they're not doing the Titanic.
We, we are not opposed, but we'd like to know what's going in there.
And it's not been explained to us until.
Way, way away. This is not right here.
Mr. Chairman? One question. Um, when you winterize the pool, don't you lower the water? You don't, with our pool, you keep all the water, we have an awkward door fitting, it's kind of like a Tupperware lid, which goes over the opening for the skimmer that's at the top of the water, collects the bees and bugs in a basket. And that goes right over that, so you're allowed to keep all of your water there, so. Yep, there's no discharging of water, other than through funnel.
What, um. When it rains like hell, which it does once in a while, um, the pool tops up, and you usually do discharge some because it's too full. Is it, there's some provision for drainage for that?
Uh, you could do it in that case, yes, I mean, it's, it's possible to do. That's unlikely, it's, the way it's been lately, with droughts and water restrictions, usually it doesn't really get that high, but I suppose it could happen, and some, some could be discharged, you know. We do sell backwash hose in our store, because a lot of people that were on Route One, you know, and a lot of people that don't have pools made by us, uh, still buy their supplies there, so I mean, some, you could attach that to ours and do it. Um, I think, uh, conservation mentioned that they would want to discharge upland, over, overland, so that something that could happen, but I have the pool, I've had it for seventeen years, and I've, I've never had to really lower the water because of the rain, just because the way it is, actually, the kids like it if they go in when it's a little fuller, let's say. You know, it's kind of, it gives it a pond effect for them, for that part, but, you know, because usually you have a few inches of clearance for this skimmer. Not a major issue, but we have questions up there.
There's really no kind of place to enjoy.
There really isn't, it's all driveway on, uh, you know, let's say if you're from the street, on the right-hand side of the house, it's all driveway. Wetlands directly behind the, the house. I mean, it starts, they have very little grass that they own, probably four or five feet. Um, and so this is really the only spot in the yard, and they have four kids, they want a pool, so we thought we, you know, knew it would be, uh, not a straightforward thing. I thought we'd come to the meeting just in case, because it's not gonna be very visible where it's going. They've also, you know, most of our pools are sixteen feet wide, they've downsized to a twelve foot, so they didn't want to ask for the whole amount, they, they kind of went more sensible in their pool zone. Is the old again? Get back, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, is there going to be a fence? Wait, is there going to be a fence between the pool and our project?
I don't think it's required by the law, the fence, because you're up, you're upright so far.
Yeah, it's above-ground, it does have a fence around it, it's kind of self-contained fence, which closes it off, it's a, it's a, um, transparent railing with pickets, so it meets the barrier codes. And it has a, uh, an outside ladder, which you use to get from the grass up to the pool, top of the pool. And that latches off on both sides, so when in the opposition, uh, children really can't get in there, young children can't.
Was that the, was that your question? Access, or were you, were you talking about a privacy issue?
Privacy issue.
Yeah, there's, he's not required to put any sort of fencing there of a certain age.
I think he's saying.
You, you, the two of you could work out whatever kind of fencing you wanted to agree to, he's not required.
Yeah, but I think Mike did say, like, he wanted himself.
What's a, what a, a white fence, and that's, that's more a matter for you two to give the.
There is a lot of trees right now, that's really, I don't, I don't see, for the most part, I'm not, I, I don't see from, from the construction of the pool, I don't see that, uh, a fence along the property line is gonna be, that's a change, it's to either one of us. The reason I say that is because you only want to build a six-foot fence. You really don't want to build anything higher than that. Uh, and the pool itself is, how far off the ground?
Uh, it's a four-foot wall and a three-foot railing.
Okay, four-foot wall and a twenty-foot.
It's three feet off the, it's four feet off the ground.
It's four, it's four feet off the ground, and it has a railing.
Well, it's a deck, a deck.
It's a railing. There's a deck around the pool, and a fence around the pool itself.
Yeah.
The structure.
Right.
So that is, how, how high is that?
It's a three-foot railing, so it's got the four-foot wall, and then the three-foot safety railing around the, kind of a catwalk or promenade.
So the whole thing is gonna be seven feet above, and it would be looking over your fence anyway.
Right.
We, we, we might, Mike said he wanted a fence to, but they're trying to sit, but.
Well, that's, that's up to, that's.
That's up to them, we, we're not requesting.
That, that's up to them.
I was just asking. No.
Okay.
There's a place to do it.
Or, excuse me, another question, about, you have trees there, would they, uh, have to be trimmed?
Are they your trees or his trees?
Will they have to be trimmed?
Or they need to be trimmed? Because if, some of it might, uh, go into the pool.
Well, if they run, if they go on his, if they go on his property, they can trim it anywhere that they want. That's a matter of right.
Are you right? You're right again, then. Yeah, I, I don't see, I, I'm looking at seven point eight, point two, point one, that spells out a whole bunch of criteria that we're supposed to be looking at, and I don't see that any of them, you know, there's no traffic increase, uh, there's no additional use on common services, et cetera, home freedom hall, that I have gone through them, and I don't see that any of them appear to be applicable to this case.
Okay. When your motion goes to, to have the, uh, court, a, a decision. Someone, second, in second, motion made, second, on paper.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, what will happen is, we'll draft a affirmative decision, uh, for approval. Uh, it'll be available at our next hearing, uh, which would be thirty days from now. Uh, if you, if you need, uh, if you need something before, you needed our approval to do this, if you need something for the building inspector prior to that, and you want to initiate activity, um, we can draft a letter indicating, I mean, you did grant them the approval to do that, but the complete decision hasn't been drafted, the final decision yet. He may or may not choose to give you an issue or permit on that basis. Recognizing that once the decision is signed, and recorded with the town clerk, that there's a twenty-day appeal period, and anybody under any circumstances can elect to appeal the decision, at which case, if that occurs, everything stops. So, you know, whether you move forward, it would appear that the butters are, are the most interested parties, and I would certainly suggest to your client that he talks further about getting some information into them, so they feel completely comfortable. But, but outside of that, that process is fairly straightforward, I mean, did you want to begin this process, like, now?
Yeah, they wanted it a month ago, of course, they want to do it because summer is out in here, they think that the, I think they'd like to get the next month out, the season out of it.
Well, I, I, you know, we can certainly provide a letter to you, uh, next week, that will, that you can go to the building department.
I'm sure the homeowner would appreciate it, he has the whole application, except for this.
If he's, if he's comfortable with that, that's his call, with our letter, you know, we'll do that, and we'll all get it to Lisa on, uh, Monday or Tuesday, the latest, and then she'll get a copy to you, she can, uh, get a copy to Ken, and, uh, then you proceed to your, at your direction.
Thank you very much.
Or if anybody wants to, if anybody wants to appeal that decision, it's not coming to us again, it's going to Superior Court.
Right.
And they've got to want it awfully bad, because that's gonna cost a lot of money. A lawyer's.
The homeowner is a lawyer, so I, she'll probably get that covered herself, but.
The homeowner isn't going to appeal it.
Oh, the homeowner would be the one defending it though, right?
Somebody, somebody defending, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right, they defend, the homeowner would defend it, right?
Right. Okay, we're good.
The school.
Thank you. Uh, I make a motion to close the hearing.
Second?
Second.
Okay, excellent.
And I, can I, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment, the board, regarding this last case. There has been some conversation in the past about the role of temporary structures as it applies to setback requirements. And there's been some debate, I think, about whether or not an item like a swimming pool is in fact a temporary structure. In my opinion, it is a temporary structure. In my opinion, if this case were otherwise reviewed, subject to our bylaws, um, I, I don't know that it would have actually needed to come here, because I consider a pool outside of a in-ground pool, a temporary structure. Just like I would a shed, just like I would a trampoline, just like I would, you know, a set of swings. And I, those would not be required to come for this board for a setback review and a special permit. This kind, there's ambiguity in the bylaws. In our bylaws not, now, it simply states that no structure can be built within the setback. And our definition of structure includes swimming pool, but I don't think a swimming pool is a structure.
Well, it's an in-ground one.
It doesn't even say in-ground. Our, 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 our bylaw structural definition, I think, is weak, and I think it's important that the, um, zoning review board committee reviews this particular product, because I think this is a, this is a case that takes town time, takes our time, and it's not clear, in my opinion, that it really should have been something that came here, because it's a temporary structure. They blow it out, they go away, there's not a foundation.
They still have to go by new setbacks and stuff, that's why they do it.
I don't know, I don't think they should, if they're temporary structures.
Wait, are you gonna ship it?
Doesn't say so. I don't think a temporary structure should. And that's some, a subject for debate, but a tem, I mean, we're not talking about foundations, this could blow down.
So you're saying you can put the pool right on the lot line?
It's temporary, he could put it in, he could put it in now, and it could blow down in a storm. And, and believe me, insurance companies don't cover for this kind of stuff. And, you know, I, I think it's something that could go away. If you're talking about building a permanent structure that remains there, you know, to the next owner and beyond, well, then I think you certainly deal with setback laws. But a temporary structure, you know, particularly an above-ground pool, take it down.
Yeah, but if you have a, you have houses close together, and you put a pool right on the lot line, I mean, people are screaming and yelling, you don't want.
Well, I, I, I understand, and I think it's a, I think it's a subject for more discussion. Because I, I, I think the way the law is written, and the way, we don't even define in-ground pools, we simply say swimming pools. I, I think we need more specis, specificity to it. And I, and I think, in, in this instance, the butter was, you know, fundamentally in support of it. Um, we're not talking about a case that's, that's really, you know, egregious in terms of really creating a potential problem. So I, just a comment.
Yeah.
Because we don't talk about, we don't talk about sheds in the bylaws, it doesn't say that, it just says no structures. And it doesn't define really what a structure is, except that it's a shelter to live in or to cover in, it's very loose.
All right, right next to me is one, is a, is someone that bought one of these, uh, sheds from New Hampshire, and it's a good one.
Right.
And they came down, but they set it on, I believe, cement blocks, but it went through this hole and got a pool for it. But, the question is, what constitutes in changing that from these sheds sitting there to a permanent one? It's a kind of foundation, isn't it?
Yeah, I, I, I think there's, there is some, uh, in the code, I think there's a size of a structure above which you need a foundation, and if you need a foundation, I believe the building inspector generally says, need a foundation, it's not temporary.
Two hundred square feet.
Anyway, is it two hundred?
Yeah, but even if you do a smaller one, ten by ten, ten by twelve, you still have to obey by the setback.
Well, that's what.
Build from it, that's what is fine, and so it's not on somebody's edge of their property. Right, the storage should, it hangs up on.
Well, because I've seen them go up. Yeah, I've seen them go up, and, you know, and it's not even only the side setbacks, but some of these lots that have irregular conformities and elements to it, sometimes people have to put them on the front of their lot, and they're within the front setback, because it's the only place they can put their thing. And it's just sitting on logs, but again, that to me is, you know, well, you don't like it, pick it up and move it.
The block thing is only because of the size. Certain size you have to put the sonar tubes in, or whatever. If you're certain, under that size, then you only have to, uh, put on a cinder.
Yeah, but, uh.
It's the size, that's what makes that.
It's, that may be in building code, it's not zoning code.
Oh, no.
But it gets to the definition of a structure. If you're trying to.
The way our definition is written, it's, it's.
Well, no, I, I, I take your, I take your point, and what I'm saying, and I, I agree with you, because in the absence of a definition in the zoning code, you have to look somewhere else, and if, so if it's silent, you might look to the, to the building code and say, well, here's structures defined, so we'll go with that.
Well, that, that's.
So that's a reason to, as you say, in the future. So that's a reason to, as you say, in the future, reexamine in the context of zoning if we want to further refine certain definitions.
I think we should.
But do you want this as a motion to go for this, to go to that board, to that review board?
Well, Don and I are both on that board, you know, we're familiar with it. The board is looking at all of the zoning regs and we're, we have years of work in front of us.
It's there already.
It's there, yeah. It's, it's an element of concern. We just all have in this case.
A lot of things are going to be wrong.
Right, it was more a comment because of the nature of the case.
Yeah, it should, yeah, tie down.
Okay, thank you.
Next case. Case number fifteen point four one. Public hearing will be held at Powell Panic Thirty-Ninth Circle. On Thursday, August twenty first at seven twenty PM to act the application to be seven twenty three fourteen from Christian Curly, six five Cross Street, Ralph Bass. Application is requested for possible modification, revision, decision to the board reveals case number ninety one point six. Robbie's okay, cleared by April Street, Ralph Bass. Robbie's in the central district, showing assesses, Matthew Dean, Rob Roy, one, Rob one. At the public hearing, members of the public domain ask questions and raise evidence that supports either the approval or disapproval of this petition. This case was published on August sixth, in August third. And the applicant is Christian Curly, sixty five Prospect Street. That is. Condition to see meeting case number time one point six. Remiss is verified April Street, assessment at fifteen point forty one, lot line. It is in the central district. And various has been granted on this public property before. He would like to sell boats for signage. Both reasons, but both were at least less than signage, seven twenty three, Chris Curry. I have several letters here regarding this case. I will read. Subject, DVA application fifteen point one thirty five April Street, boat sales request. Date eight twenty one fourteen, Curtis Bryant, five four channel. Case number fifteen oh one thirty five Central Street. Fifteen dash forty one dash one, zone central. As the application states, this amendment to various DVA special permit approval issued in nineteen ninety one, at which time the DVA was the special permitting authority in special permit of most storage issues at that time exclusively created the boat sales. The applicant is now requesting that the special permit be amended to allow boat sales. Primary concern raised by the client is that boat sales are not specific. As a permit used in central district, therefore is not permitted. Furthermore, there are no special permits that the DVA's owners can purchase while the technical zone is open, so the permit of boat sales in central district. Although the master of the law's order here in section nineteen states that special permits may be issued only for users which are common in general purpose and intent of avoidance of bylaws. Those on the state that zoning ordinances for bylaws shall state as a citizen's movement and deeds or location proposed uses of those special permits shall be waived. That in line with the special permit provision for boat sales in the central district. I cannot see how the current special permit to be explained, but requested corrections. That is from the planning board. I have one. But the page like conservation of future data of August twelve, special permit case number fifteen dash one thirty five Central Street. Chairman Carson members of the zone board appeals to the public who are obligated to stay in office of law. Conservation of public has no problem with that, both changed views to allow the sale of sales of boats on the weeks long of stores. Thank you for your consideration. I have no chief partner, five five, uh, application fifteen point one one. I have read the application to the boat mentioned application, private's only problem is that they continue, that they continue to be clear that this is the yard in your mental, I guess, in your privacy access to one of the boats. Your question contained comments, the application is called. And I was from, uh, help about July thirty first, thirty five April Street, about forty one, Rob one. The application for thirty five April Street, that you believe is a building of your property, no substantial business. And there's no proposed, again, a name that's part of the place. Which are present at this time, the health department does not have any issues with proposed or sale of boats as described in the application. What happened? The building inspector, Chris, Chris, I'm in the C E O of the Zoning Department, Ray. I'm walking, you're neighbors at thirty nine April Street. It's a great question, whether you are applying to Zoning to check the DVA case number nine one dash six. I believe in violation of section one eight six, that's the score of the post. I propose that the best areas are always being captured and secured. Additional signs, they propose to be able to sell disposed on the stretch. Anywhere, one, another acre parcel, eight six April Street. Please contact my office if there is possible, discuss this pattern, and we reach the end of the seven eight, two nine six, Thursday, eight, twelve. This is my finding, few sources, eight, thirty days. I did read the ad, yeah?
I don't.
Did I read the ad? Okay. You have the ad paper. Case number fifteen point oh one, Howard Rowley's Own Boarded Fields. Public hearing will, a public hearing will be held on October act thirty ninth, Central Street, Thursday, August twenty first at seven twenty PM, that application received seven twenty three. The fourteen Christian Curly, sixty five Prospect Street, Ralph Bass. Application is requesting a possible modification of the decision. The board of people is based on the night one point six. Robbie's ordered to find April Street, Ralph Bass, the property's in the central district, assess the number fifteen point forty one, Rob one. At the public hearing, members of the board ask questions and raise evidence that supports either the approval or disapproval of this petition. Public list, August sixth, thirteen, Howard Rowley, Howard Rowley.
Okay, Chris.
How you doing? My name's Chris Curly. Let me up again. Um, so as you said, nineteen ninety one, I think, was when you guys made the first, um, whatever, all this paperwork, all this stuff.
On your.
So on this, yeah, and that. Originally it was an eleven acre parcel. So I would understand that you guys would have to, of course, make sure that what we're doing there doesn't get spread out. And I don't know exactly what is allowed and what isn't in the central district or whatever. So here I acquire this whole thing. And what it is, is I don't like to sell boats, but yes, there's some for sale. They're my customers' boats. I provide a service for them. I look at it as if I can't sell my customers' boats, if I can't accommodate them for all of their needs, then they, of course, have more reason to go somewhere else. So I have no idea how to word it or if you guys, um, if I could possibly be allowed to sell even one boat at a time or two boats. And I can't, they probably won't be there all the time. There has been a couple sitting there. I wish they were sold. They aren't my boats. You know, I'm not a, I'm not a dealer or anything like that. I just provide a service. So that's kind of why I'm looking to see if we can revise this where it is now a one acre parcel because everything was sold off all the way around it, which is one of the reasons why I'm here now. So I don't have a lot to say, I can answer any questions, but I think you guys have, you guys have a copy of the original parcel and then what it's dropped down to, right? Not that it matters, but I kind of, you know, I drive up April, April Street and you can count like five boats that are sitting off for sale, you know, and there's boats for sale in the same district that I'm sitting in. So I can't sell my own boat, but my next door neighbor who's, could complain that I am selling the boat, can sell it. It's one of those, it's, it's.
It's because they live there.
What's that?
It's because they live there. You can sell a car there to sell your boat, that's your home. That's all together different to it.
Well, I saw the planning boards that, you know, they don't have a provision for, you know, selling of boats in the central district, so I was just saying, there are boats for sale in the same district, but. But they aren't, they aren't. What's that?
But not other people's boats.
Right. So if I own it, I can sell it? So I could sell.
Each of us can live ten side by side. We can each put a boat on our property as long as it's our boat. You could even own.
So I could sell boats there if I owned them?
Technically.
No, no.
I'd have to have residence there.
The difference is, is you're not.
Right, right. That's what I just said, I, I'd need a residence there, I understand.
It's commercial. That, that's, that's the difference.
Okay.
So I've heard from you, I know what you want to do. I'd like to hear, I've got three others here that, uh, I'm sure have something to say.
Yes, I'm Ray Yakovach, I'm the one with you, please. Ray Yakovach, I have a thirty nine April Street. And I'm the one brought this to, to the, um, building this right now. As far as the boats go, I mean, basically it's an ice water. They butt, they butt up to my, right up to my property. This past winter, there were at least five boats there, could've been six, I don't remember counting them, and three trailers coming and going. Often I come home, I find cars in my driveway looking at the boats because I pull into the back, see the back of the boat. I have to now back out, move, get out, find out what's going on. They drive through their property and instead of backing out, they turn around, cut across the grass and come onto my property, across my grass and I'm. I bet people knock on my door asking me if I know anything about the boats. It's happened three times over a number of years. It's, it's, it's a, it's a problem and it's gotten out of hand with the number of boats. I mean, you know, it has to be all or none. It can't be one or two because it's just going to get out of control. So not only that is, you're also currently, they, well, as of two days ago, there were two trucks for sale on the property. There's a truck being parked there at night or, I don't know, storing there, it was a trailer, great wave landscaping, I guess it is, I don't know why they're there. Signage, as far as the signage goes, he's advertising a business that's a mile and a half down the road. I'm self-employed, I have a business that's a mile and a half from the other direction and I put a sign up there promoting my business for my property saying form function a mile and a half down the distance. There's a storage container on the property, I don't know whose property, I don't know what that's all about. It's just, it's, it's becoming a, you know, group one commercial zone. It's really, it's a convenience to me and my family. And, and, and driving, also it's driving down property values because I do have a house for sale there and the first thing that client, that, that I get from the elders, they come in, the first thing they ask about is why are the boats there? So it is, it is impacting my thought and value.
He said it all. He said it all.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Dummer, Dan Sepans, sixty six Main Street. When I got this notice in the mail, it brought up a lot of old memories. Because this Christian was a lot younger then. There's a lot of history with this property. And if you recall, that boatyard was put there without any input or any process being followed other than after the fact. And there were, there was a special permit issued with restrictions. And the practical aspect of this, before Ray made it, or brought it to the attention of the building inspector, those restrictions have not been adhered to. And that is, I think, an injustice to the butters of not only the boatyard, but the Main Street property, which is no longer owned by the Curly family. But if you look at your original decision and what the intent was and you look at the condition of that property today, we're all being impacted by, by the condition of the property. So I would implore you to have the original decision enforced. Once that's enforced, you should then take up this new, this new request because we're not getting the assurances that we were given when that decision was issued.
Case ninety six nine six. Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, that original decision was very precise.
So right now it's boat storage guy, it's on one piece of property. It's not connected to.
It's just one acre, I think it's like an acre and a quarter. It used to be part of everything there.
Uh, Mr. Chairman. In this ninety one dash six. On page four. The uses as defined in this document on the subject premises, as shown on the approved plan, shall not be expanded or extended so as to occupy any of the remainder of this eleven acre parcel. So in other words, this, at that time, the storage was not cut out and did as separate--
Right, prior to--
It was all a part of the eleven, yeah. Came from the permit authority. Any new use of the remainder of the parcel, put a parcel page. Now, access to the boat storage yard shall be limited to the Havel Street frontage, as shown on the approved plan. Access shall be restricted to Pearlies Marina employees and customers whose boats are stored at the storage yard, and who have been specifically authorized by Pearlies Marina. The boat storage yard is not to be open to the public and shall be secured when not in use by Pearlies Marina. The hours of operation of the boat storage yard shall be seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Saturday, and nine thirty AM to five PM on Sunday. And four, owner shall maintain combined evergreen and deciduous screening of the boat storage yard. A barrier shall be maintained adjacent to the outside of the fenced area on the northeast and south sides. Five, storage boats slash trailers shall not exceed a maximum height of thirteen feet. Six, boats may not be sold, displayed for sale, and signs may not be posted relating to boat sales, boat storage, or boat storage yard anywhere upon the entire eleven acre parcel, which is the subject of this application and decision. All boats, boat trailers-- Number seven, all boats, boat trailers, automobiles and white trucks shall be stored on the property only in the areas as specified, stated in requirement number A one and number B A one. And let me start again. Of number one A and number one B above. And they shall have a current registration, or one that has not been expired more than one registration period. No junk automobiles, junk boats, or junk vehicles of any type shall be stored anywhere on the entire eleven acre parcel. Number eight, owner shall maintain off-street parking, as detailed on the plan for the residential rental unit, variety and storage yard. Nine, owner, tenants shall have all necessary licenses, permits, et cetera, to legally operate any and all businesses on the entire eleven acre parcel. Next page.
You read the one.
Yeah.
For those that may not understand, and some of the fore numbers may not understand, is this eleven acre parcel extended both on the group one A, including, uh, I was gonna say, is all go to, uh, have autos, sign auto repair and repair. Kyle bought this now, and--
You could ask that, you could access it from Havel Street, from Main Street, and actually from Allen Avenue, Pearlie Ave, down to Allen. So there's three ways that you could access it before, so that's why it's limited.
So that's why, what you refer to the rest of the-- It's about the talk. Okay, that's it.
Okay. Number ten, allowed incidental uses only within the fenced and storage yard. A, hauling, blocking, and covering boats to be stored. B, removal of equipment and engines for repair at off-site locations. C, inspection, inventory, and appraisal of boats as required for Pearlies Marina operations. D, application of boat bottom paint is permitted in each year between April first and June fifteenth by Pearlies Marina employees and storage containers specifically authorized by the Marina during the business hours set forth above, upon the following terms and conditions.
With, with that storage containers and storage customers.
Where?
Says--
Storage customers, okay.
I love that.
Okay. I'll read it again. Application of the boat bottom paint is permitted in each year between April first and June fifteenth by Pearlies Marina employees and storage customers specifically authorized by the Marina during the business hours set forth above, upon the following terms and conditions. One, surfaces may be prepared by hand sanding only. No power sanding, chemical stripping, or gurney is allowed. Number two, paint may be applied by brush or hand roller only. No spray painting is permitted. Number three, paints and solvents must be used from the original container, which container must identify the chemical composition of the contents, alternatively, bear an EPA registration number. Only paints and solvents available at retail without special permits may be used on the premises. Four, painting is restricted to boats stored on the premises for immediately, for the immediately previous storage season. Boats may not be brought, be brought from off-site locations for the purpose of painting, repair, or resale. Number five, impermeable ground cover shall be employed in all sanding and painting operations. Number eleven, prohibited incidental uses at the boat storage yard. A, storage of wooden boats. B, power sanding, burning, or chemical stripping of paint from boat hulls. C, wood and/or fiberglass repair. D, no paint, solvents, chemicals, petroleum products, or any hazardous materials as defined in the Raleigh zoning bylaw, section six, point four, point sixteen, may be stored. E, engine and motor repair, other than removal for off-site repair. F, welding, burning, or other steel-related repair. G, public sales operations or other public access to the premises. The findings herein stated and the permission herein granted are expressly conditioned upon the owner slash applicant's acceptance of the above as evidenced by the recording of this decision at the registry of deeds and the further condition that the town of Raleigh Building Inspector shall be entitled at any time to enter upon the premises and conduct such inspections as are reasonably necessary to ensure compliance with this decision. This special permit is granted by unanimous vote this twenty-eighth day of February nineteen ninety-one. Zoning Board of Appeals, signed by Glenn A. Iberan, member; Thomas J. Potts, junior, member; Alfred G. Clifford, member; Donald W. Thurston, chairman; Nathaniel and Delmar Flurk.
If I have one question I might ask, Chris. It says here, the Thomas says here, that granted are expressly conditioned upon the four of advocates acceptance of the above as evidenced by the recording of this decision. Do you know if that decision was a recording of this decision?
No.
I would think that it would have--
Right. Would you like me to look into that?
Hey.
What's that?
Um, I would, I would think it would have to be where the entrance been split off.
Right.
Right, and then, and then transfer.
Right, yeah. Go. Any other comments? Any questions? What? Either way. Do I owe you?
No, we need to discuss it.
Discussion. What could we--
All right, shut off today.
Mr. Chairman, in my opinion, as much as I understand the applicant's basis for his request, it's a natural incidental condition that someone who deals with boats and supports customers who have boats in right ways would likely be somebody who would be in a position to want to sell them. I think it's very clear from an earlier decision that the board was concerned at that point in time that a commercial activity be allowed to become fostered in this location. And it was only through the review of the original first decision that, that Mr. Pearlie was allowed to actually store boats there in a specific area, because it was, it was understood that that was a normal place for him to be able to continue to conduct certain elements of his business in support of his customers, but not to and including sales. I think the, the planning board's point restricts us accurately, because regrettably, the central district does not permit the use of any type of sales related to boats. And the way the zoning bylaws are here in town, we don't have, this board nor any other board has the ability to grant a use variance which would allow any individual or company to operate a use at any particular point in time, because it was deemed adequate or appropriate, or useful to the community, or relevant to the other types of businesses in the area. I see this purely as really a request to put, to approve a, a use that we can prove. And therefore, you know, my thought would be that the only, regrettably, the only motion we can make is to deny the application, because you're asking the board to actually approve and take an action that the board can't take. We can't approve that used sale of vehicles, we can't sell anything else. As has already been discussed, each of us has the right to sell our own property where we live. I can understand why it's a dilemma. How many boat customers do you have, actually, total?
Up there for storage.
All, well, all over.
All, all over?
Yeah.
I don't know, probably like three fifty, something like that.
Okay. So, so in fact, the relative portion of people that you support and have been supporting in this capacity is extremely small. My suspicion is therefore that if that, if that element of your business is forced to go away, it's not gonna dramatically affect--
No, 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 I'm not gonna go like--
Right, and, and, and clearly, as much as there's concern about that, the board in the past has made an effort to provide some grounds for you to conduct the business there, within the area. There is some concerns that there's been some violations of those, those conditions that were granted. And I can see by reading these, that visually some things haven't been done, and some things remain done. Those things need to be adhered to. The butters, both the media and nearby have the right to have that enforced.
Yep.
And I suspect the board could refer it back to the zoning, to the building inspector to, to work with you to make sure that gets done.
No, it'll be, it'll be cleaned up. The, um, somebody mentioned storage container or something like that?
And the--
And the trucks and stuff?
Yeah, that's a Great Wave--
Yeah, that's, that's a miscommunication. The, the neighbor on that side, the small engine repair guy?
Yes.
He thought that he owned all that land. So that just like came, and then me, after the storage container showed up, and then the truck showed up, then I found that Great Wave guy and talked to the guy at the small repair shop there. And I said, you know, you need, and he's the, I said, so I got nowhere to put it, blah, blah, blah. I said, well, I'll give you like, as a good faith, a month or two months, and of course, it's going past that, to get it somewhere. Because it's on, it's, I think it's like right on the edge of the two properties. And yes, that stuff needs to go, and that's not mine. It's somehow, I acquired it, and it had nothing to do with me, but, but it'll clean it up. So I mean, basically, basically what you're saying is, no matter what, even if like I put a nice hedge up over here and made it so that there was one boat, and it was all pretty and flowers and whatever, there's really just no way to grant a permit to sell boats, everything, so, period, right?
And one of, one of the requirements on that was that deciduous, that trees be planted around the--
The fence.
Around the outside--
Did it say planted or maintained? Did it say planted and maintained?
Around the outside of the fence.
Well, I mean, it's, it's said on three corners, the east, it's on three sides.
Three sides.
Right. I'm pretty sure there's three sides of rope there, but--
The question was--
That would happen--
You, you can't, you can't have it against the fence, because you need to be able to maintain the fence. So we just, we mow a path like six feet wide around the outside of the fence, and then it's, there's trees up.
The question is, what can you do to block that area so people will not come across?
Oh, yeah, well, his thing, it's all, it's all an open area with three driveways, which is what he's talking about. And I could put up maybe a nice fence or something, so then people don't drive onto his property. I mean, you know, I could do something.
I think what happens about driving onto my property and my lawn is, they pull in the trailers. And a lot of these guys, I don't think they can really back up their trailers.
Yeah.
So it's easier for them to just make a loop across the grass onto my, and it's not tight enough, so they'll-- So, you know, I did put rocks up most of the way, but I didn't have enough I found on the property to continue, because it, it just happens all the time. But I think it's just because a lot of guys can't back up, you know, don't have backup trailers.
But the boats that are for sale right now would block people from driving onto the property.
Ah.
Well, I, I, the, a point of fact is however, that as regards this application, the board has the, is, is charged with either acting upon the application or proving it under whatever condition we choose to do that, if there are additional conditions surrounding approval, or to deny it. It's not to address the other issues that are remaining there, or give you new conditions about what you should do. As, as has been pointed out, what you have to do is what's already been agreed to be done.
Mm-hmm.
And anything that's not being done, you know, is more a matter between an interpretation of, is this six foot buffer for you to maintain the fence and have shrubbery around and create privacy? You know, meet the conditions of the prior decision.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's for the building inspector to enforce. And in our denial, if, if that's what the board does, we would send a copy to the building inspector and request that he's the zoning enforcement officer, review each of these conditions to determine if there are violations, and report back to us about what they are, about what he's gonna do about it. I think certainly some of the intrusions on your property from-- I think certainly some of the intrusions on your property from passersby who are going, oh, I might want to buy that boat, should go away if those boats go away. So, so, so those kinds of things should be, so the moment those boats that are outside of the storage area are either put in.
Right.
A lot of, some, some of those issues regarding that element will go away. And Mr. Iacobi's principal concerns, I think, will be addressed. I think then the rest of you, if it, if we get back to where it was supposed to be is where you'd be happy at least there.
Yeah, my, my point is just that, you know, there was a decision made and we should all be adhering to that decision.
Definitely.
And, you know, I, I was a lot younger then and for the past twenty-five years I've had taken a live and let live attitude, but getting this notice in the mail, you know, it's.
Gets odd stuff.
Well, no, it should be, you know, it was an agreement. Everybody, you know, and it works, should work for everybody.
Unfortunately, over the time, the board sees circumstances where provisions and decisions become unsupported and they need to be supported and they need to be addressed. And this element addresses that. And, and, and Chris seems perfectly willing to do that. So I have no reason to believe he's not going to do that until we see again, and as Mr. Iacobi did now, these things happen because somebody takes an action. That's how, that's unfortunate.
But I, but I think, and I think that's the unfortunate part because it shouldn't be upon the neighbors to police the zoning board's decisions.
There's a whole conversation about zoning board and planning board enforcement that gets involved with every structure that gets built because there are all kinds of enactions that are taken. And, and it's a very valid point, you know. Cities that have the resources, I'll say this, cities that have the resources to employ staffs that can go out and police everything that's going on in the town typically are more adept at addressing inconsistencies in the way things are applied. And, and if you look across all, all, I mean, there, this is just one area where there are lots of things going on that, you know, are in violation of some zoning code or some bylaw and it's just almost impossible to police it. So I'm not excusing the fact that these happen. But typically in the small community, we're all forced to say, that, that doesn't seem right. You know, or I was directly involved in that and that isn't right. And that's frankly the way most of the boards hear about it. It's, it's an unfortunate component. I agree with you completely in your point. In a, in a practical matter, it's very difficult to enforce. Not because people don't want it done, it's just lack of resources.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I might address a question the applicant asked earlier. I'm not sure, I guess it's been implicitly answered, but it said, so there's no way to, to permit what he's asking. And I'd like to make the point that under the bylaw and the general law, even if we allowed it, that allowance would be illegal.
Right, that's what I was kind of like.
Right, and I don't know if you got that directly.
I didn't, but.
Okay, you do now.
Okay, yeah, that's kind of what.
Yeah.
I thought I heard, so there's really no way that it would ever happen no matter what. Even if you all wanted to, you can't.
Right now, right.
Special town meeting and special.
Right, if, if appeal would hold up.
You'd have to amend the bylaw.
Right.
And that's town meeting, right?
How many, how many boats do you have in the storage?
In the storage yard, when it's, right now, there's probably twenty. When it's full, there's probably like forty, forty, fifty, you know, it's hard to.
How many, how many of those boats are stored here do you sell?
How many do I sell? Um, I've sold.
And how do you sell?
Just by, just by visual, you know, to, to, to list them all, it's not cost effective because I don't really, I don't make a lot off of them. I do it more as a favor of my customers, you know, I'm not.
Because they, they belong to your customer.
Right.
And they're not yours.
Right.
Yep.
Right, so.
Do you take a picture of them, stick them up the wall, same thing down there at the marina?
Oh, yeah, down at the marina, yeah, we have a listing of them down there. So people, you know, I can still feasibly, I can do it with other resources. You know, I can keep them locked in the, locked in the gate and, and still, you know, I can put them on Craigslist, I can do whatever. That's just free if I just put them out. And there's a lot of traffic on April Street, so, but there's other ways. It's, it's not going to kill me. I just figured I, I'm, I'm up on the block, so I'll, it's probably the wrong way to do it, but.
So there's a car there now and a sign out front of the fence, right?
There's what?
A car or the sign that's outside of the fence?
There's a, there's a truck.
A Jeep.
A Jeep. I don't, I didn't, I, I didn't see the Jeep there today.
It wasn't there today?
But there's, but there's been a, there's been a truck and a Jeep. Those aren't mine, that's the.
No, 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 they'll, they'll sign on it, they'll sign. Those are things going to get out.
Yep, yep, no, and this, that container, it's all that stuff. That's, like I said, he's on borrowed time there anyway, but. And I have two boats sitting outside that'll be gone almost tomorrow, by the weekend. You know, I'll have it cleaned up, I, I got them.
I make a motion that the board, after review of all the relevant facts and in conjunction with the memos from following boards, deny the application as submitted due to the fact that we are unable to grant the use as the applicant desires in the central district.
Aye.
Aye.
Just to do it like the selectmen do, you state your name and then what your vote is.
Ayes.
Ayes are good. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Close the hearing on that.
Uh, I make the motion that we close the public hearing.
Second that.
Aye.
Aye. I thought we were going home.
You will in just a few minutes, it's going to be very short. It was a lot, see you later.
Well, I, I tried, I, I had an exchange with Lisa yesterday and I tried to get John and out. I said, you know, if you just want to send it to us, it's okay, John, I'm not gonna, I got nothing for you now. You want to open the hearing?
Continue hearing of Marion Way. We have Mr. E. Paulus here this evening and, uh, what have we got for us?
Is that a conservation commission meeting on Tuesday? And, uh, we gave permission for the technical review agent to continue their review, which I hope is the last one. We've answered all their questions. And that should be forthcoming within ten days. They're usually pretty, pretty fast in their reviews. And that should wrap it up with the conservation permission. And the one issue that, that this board was concerned about the ownership and applicant, I've contacted a fellow by the name of Michael Hurley, who's on the legal staff at Mass Housing, and he's looking into it. And he's, I thought he'd get back to me this week, but he hasn't. But he told me that the applicant status is not, it's not unusual for the applicants to change even after a final approval of a, of a project, let alone in, you know, in the, in the hearing stages. So the, so.
It's, it's, it's amazing to me.
That's, that's where that stands right now. And I sent them a resume of Tom Frangis that they wanted and a, and a copy of the purchase and sales agreement. And I should be hearing from them any day that Tom Frangis is in fact the applicant.
John, has there been, that's fine for our own concern, but I think, I mean, has there been any further feedback from the town about, about, you know, their interest to purchase?
Oh, I, it came up at the conservation commission meeting, not as part of my hearing, but, but later on, that the conservation commission, I'm trying to think of the exact word, oh, advocated. And the, the advocated not to purchase the property because it has very little, if any, environmental value. I believe I'm stating that correctly, no. So that's, I, I, I guess the planning board has to weigh in on it. I don't, I don't, I, I don't know what the planning board has said, if anything, yet.
So you don't have, I was under the impression you had some more information from where's Leanne with? Or that's what you got in this most brief meeting and you don't have it in writing?
Exactly, right, right.
Okay.
So you're asking for a continuance?
For a continuance, yeah. I have a letter to that effect.
Okay, we have the letter from John Preston Roberts on the Board of Appeals. We are box number seventy-five thirty-nine Central Street. Now the gas, diet, now this way, project deals on the board of the fields members. I continue public hearing for Marion Way Project through September eighteen thousand fourteen. Great for the years, John, folks. Do I hear motion to accept this letter?
So move.
Motion. Motion to the day, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, most votes. Okay. All right, John.
Okay, see you next one. Thank you very much.
Good night. Thanks, Sam.
Okay.
Do we, um, would you move to, uh, continue your motion to continue hearing?
Provided a surrogate meeting, I. Check it out, will you?
Yes. We, we just signed the letter, asked them to continue it till then. They, they go, establish that we're going to do it.
Okay. I hope we continue the hearing to September eighteen.
How about the fact that it's on Sunday? That's all I wondered about.
Do you want a second of motion?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion. We need to continue to September eighteen. Thank you. You all done?
Adjourned.
Adjourned.
Has he, has he? We need you adjourned.
Has he authorized you to get?
I think so.
Motion second.
There we go.
Motion second. We will second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, bring that.
No.
Thank you very much. Look, Steve.